Our Father, we're grateful to be here tonight to do the business of the city. We thank you for the privilege allowing us to do this for a time. Oh God, as we feel the cold breeze of winter coming on, we know your presence. We feel it daily. Lord, we ask that you be with us tonight as we deliberate the several things we need to work on and talk about. Let us begin in harmony and end in peace. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen.
First guy in my business will be.
The minutes would be November 3rd instead of 17.
Real call please.
Councilwoman Rish?
Present.
Councilman Weber?
Present.
Councilman Shomel?
Present.
Councilman Nobby?
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilman Creach? Councilwoman Seiler?
So we have one, two, five. We have five council people present tonight. We have a forum and we can do business. I'd ask everybody to maybe turn off their cell phones or put them on vibrate so they don't interrupt the meeting. And I welcome everybody tonight. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. This being our middle of the month meeting, we'd have the reading of the minutes of the November 3rd and the November.
No, it's only the November 3rd.
But didn't we have two meetings?
No.
Yeah, and we did, no, we didn't, okay. November 3rd meeting. What's your pleasure?
Second.
I think it might just be approved.
Second.
Second, got a motion and a second that the minutes be approved as they were sent out. Are there any additions or corrections? Anyone appearing or all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a request for match money for the fire act grant, the fire department and EMS department.
Hello?
Diane got this worked out for me. What we're asking for the fire department is to replace engine three. It's a 1994. It's got around 70,000 miles, a little bit less than 70,000 miles on it. To replace the truck is $675,800 and our match would be $32,180. And that's if we get to grant and only if we get to grant. So she was asking for you to commit to that if we get to grant.
Okay, ours is we're wanting to replace EMS three, which is the 97 ambulance, the oldest one we have. The AFG on it will only go up to 150,000. That's their cap on it. So I talked to the mayor this morning a little bit about it and we thought maybe try to take it to a 15% match. The AFG for the side that we cover, we have to go to a 10%, but thought by maybe going to 15, it might help us a little bit. By doing that, our match side on it would be 22,500. But we also have to have physicals to get to grant. That would add another 850. And then we can also apply for a equipment side to it where we could replace a monitor and then upgrade our cots and two, three stair chairs to go to which each ambulance. So we're looking at right at $29,900 match if everything was to cover.
Twenty-nine what?
Twenty-nine thousand nine dollars. And that would cover everything. Everything else is at a 10% except the ambulance and it's at a 15%.
Dale, what's AFG?
Assistance to firefighter screen.
This is of course only if we would get all these grants would come through. The likelihood of that happening is pretty nil. But anytime you can trade that kind of money for the kind of money we would get. The problem is, I don't know where we can find the money for the match, but we.
You almost have to somewhere.
Couldn't pass it by. We of course got the riverboat to depend on. And as I told Dale today, we have two more years of rebate coming from Medicare. We don't know when we're going to get that, but that could cover his match.
Oh, I would think it.
More than cover his match. So the only match we might have to come up would be the fire grant. So I think it owes us to keep trying for everything we can get. Unless you feel otherwise, well, I'll take a motion to pledge ourselves to that if, only if we get the grants. We don't spend it unless we get them.
Do we have anything in the works now where we might have to pay on something?
The ambulance, but we think we got it covered.
Okay.
The one worth putting a new chassis under.
You just cover.
We're covering.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
One second. Motion and a second to okay the match if we would get these grants. Any discussion?
Do you know when, what the time?
From now till next.
Year sometime?
Yeah, sometime next year.
Our trip will usually.
Yeah, March, it'll be next October sometime there.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Pass on. We take A, B, C, and D resolutions together if it's okay with you. One's a reimbursement for telephone, the other one's a transfer in the park, and the other one's a transfer to state. You have any problem with that? Anybody?
Nope.
Okay. I would take a motion to pass those if you would be.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion to pass pending resolution 201440, 201441, and 201442 inclusive if.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's taken care of. Pending ordinance 3163, this is the speed bump ordinance. I'd like to hold that for a minute. The engineer that engineered that for me was, is he here? He was west of Glenwood just a few minutes ago. He called me, I talked to him on telephone. After we had our meeting last week, I consulted several people. I did some calling on the phone and I hired Strand to come up here, look at the thing, read the law on street, the end up rules pertaining to speed bumps and study it for us. And the reason I did that, I was told that if a motorcycle went around there in the dark and hit that, it would probably throw them into one of the houses beyond that going that way. Beyond this way, it might be okay. I didn't want to try to pass this ordinance and find out then that it was illegal or that it might cause an accident and we'd be sued. So I hired Strand and I think he's here. They just saw him. Somebody did. He may be taking his coat off or going to the restroom or whatever. He came up from Columbus tonight. He has studied this very thoroughly and he's given us some, some things that we could do up there. Ah, you're up.
All right.
Steve Ruble from Strand. Steve, I'm sorry to rush you so much. I appreciate you coming up. He came up from Columbus. He's been here. He's studied our situation. He's, he's got no, he doesn't even know who the characters are in this program. He doesn't know who's for it, who's against it. So he's doing this from a standpoint of what's legal, what's not legal, and what is best for the city of Connersville. So Steve, I'll let you give your report.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I apologize for the council being a little bit tardy tonight. But I have taken the opportunity to look at the situation at 35th Street and Central Avenue from what we would call a traffic calming standpoint. And the Institute for Transportation Engineers provides some pretty good guidance about different types of traffic calming measures that can be employed and where they're best employed and most effective. One of the interesting things about this particular situation is that it's in, in a low-speed residential area, but it's also in a relatively tight curve in the road where, where this is being applied. So really that, that rules out some items as far as recommended treatments. A speed bump like you would see in a parking lot or something like that probably is not the best option in this particular instance because of that tight curvature. The vehicle hits it at an angle and it isn't the best application for a traffic calming measure at this particular location. Probably the, the best option in, in this particular situation is something that's commonly referred to as a speed table. It's, it's similar to a speed bump and only, only in that, you know, it's about three, three and a half inches high, but it ramps up over about six feet. There's a flat spot on the top and then it ramps back down. This is a lot better for the situation where you're in a curve because it doesn't rock the vehicle as bad, but it still serves that traffic calming aspect where the trap, through traffic is going to want to slow down to navigate this particular treatment. One of the other options that I did discuss with Mayor is a median treatment where a median is installed in the center of the roadway. Curves are placed at the side in order to shrink down your through-traffic lane width and it also prevents center line crossing. Probably what was happening in the curve before any treatment was put in there and that's was allowing the vehicles to go through at a higher rate of speed. I think either option is, is a good option. I do think that the, the median option is probably going to be probably two to three times more costly than the speed table. But as I, as I've looked at this and we've come here tonight to recommend to you is that I think the best option from a traffic standpoint would probably be the speed table option. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this particular item.
Three and a half inches high, Stephen, how long did you say or how wide would it be?
It's about 22 feet long. It'll, it'll span to the gutter line of the roadway so that it doesn't block the drainage system that's there.
Would it be in the curve or would that be prior to the curve?
It, it would be in the curve. This particular application could be placed in the curve without, without being a big issue for vehicles hitting it at an angle. That's why the flat on the top helps in the situation.
Do we have to have signs advising motorists of it?
Yes. You would want to give advanced warning with signage that says that this is approaching, especially since it is in a curve and it's not immediately apparent to folks approaching. The speed hump does, or I'm sorry, the speed table does have pavement markings on the table that will alert the driver that they're coming up to the table. So that will help also Fran, but certainly you would want that advanced warning signage also.
What's it, what's the estimated cost of this whole thing with signage and everything?
Yeah. We haven't run.
We have signs up there.
Okay.
We do have signs.
About a bump ahead, I think they say, or speed bump ahead.
In this case, it would say speed table ahead.
Okay.
Would this also be better say if there was a motorized wheelchair or something trying to travel on the road? Would that, would it be slow enough going up that they could go over that without turning their wheelchairs up?
It would certainly be more accommodating than a speed bump. There's no doubt about that. You're making that, you're making that three, three and a half inch rise over a six-foot span instead of, you know, a matter of about six inches. So it's definitely more traversable than the speed bump.
Can you give us a ballpark in cost? I know you can't give us an exact, but just a ballpark.
This is an asphalt construction, so we're in a poor time of year for that. So it's going to depend a little bit about contractor availability and the availability materials, to be honest with you. With the temperatures we're seeing tonight, you can't put asphalt down. But, you know, I, I'm going to throw out a figure of $5,000 to $7,000. That is, that is a completely off the top of my head number. It can shift quite a bit either way.
Steve, we have our own blacktop machine and when the weather's preventing, we could put it in there.
Well, that would certainly.
So all we have to do is buy the asphalt and we have the labor on staff.
That would certainly dramatically reduce that.
You want to show the picture? I think you have a picture of it.
Sure. I didn't make extra copies, so we'll have to share, but this is a, this is just a graphic representation of where it might be located and what it would look like. It's not an engineering drawing. It's there to show a concept, but it gives you an idea of what we're talking about.
Paul, would you like to come to the podium and look at this, please? Paul is the person that lives there where the guardrail is?
Yes.
And he's the one that brought this to our attention.
You know, somebody brought up to me, you know, like when you go off the side of the road and you hit, hit those bumps to wake you up? Would anything like that be, you know, put a bunch of those in the curve?
Yeah. You could, you could, you could place those, they're commonly referred to as rumble strips. And we've seen some center line rumble strip applications. They're mostly to alert people when they're crossing the center line. I would say that they would have a more limited effect on speed in this particular application because it, somebody who's speeding through there already knows their speed. And, and that's not going to stop them from speeding. It's not going to cause them to slow down. It would just alert them that they're crossing the center line.
See, what this does allows the car to be completely up on the table. So you're not boom, 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 boom. You're boom and you're up on the table and then you're down the other side. And if a motorcycle would hit it, he would have the chance of hitting the bump, just like hitting a bump in a road, going for 22 feet and then down them all. Where this one, if you'd hit this in the dark real fast with more, it'd just throw you, it would, it would be dangerous. Besides hitting it on an angle. What do you think, Paul?
Well, this is something that I've talked about ever since we've been talking about. I said make it wider, like that. And also if, if anybody's been over Richmond and went down here on Main Street, Richmond?
They have those.
They got all kinds of bumps, about every, every, through the block even. And plus they put curves in there and that's all to reduce speed and, and make that more pedestrian safe.
So this would, this would be pleasing to you if we installed this rather than the bump?
I can go with either one of them. I mean, I, I just, you know, anything that, anything that would help the situation would be acceptable to me. I'm not, I'm not stuck on one thing. I never have been stuck on one thing. We've tried. This has been in for what, a year and a half or two years? And so we, that makes the time. And that's the best alternative we could ever come up with. I mean, we talked to a lot of different things and that's the reason they want to come. But to get it, to hit it straight, I knew that you'd either have to set it here or set it here so that you were hitting it with your car straight as opposed to hitting it at angles. You put it in a curve, you're always going to have one wheel cross first and the other wheel causing, so you're getting about four bangs out of it instead of.
Is it possible to make it like this so you do hit it straight?
It's, it's not practical to do it that way. The, I think because this transition takes place over a six-foot length, I think you're going to see a lot, a lot gentler traverse from an automobile, but it's still enough of a rise that it gets people's attention that they, they want to slow down and makes them want to slow down. It's uncomfortable for them to feel that rise as they're driving over.
The other style you talked about putting something in the middle, there's not enough width in that street to do that. Would that be clear or not?
I, I think there would be enough width. It, it wouldn't be a wide median. It would be like a two-foot wide concrete median. It was the option that we looked at. Like I said, we hadn't put a lot of engineering design into it up to that point, but that was a concept that we put forward as an alternative to this.
You wouldn't mind being a pair of driver on that?
Uh, no, sir. It would get your attention.
Anyway, what this has done for us, whatever we do, it's documented here in the minutes that we had an engineering studied according to state and federal standards. We've looked at it. We've done our homework. Whatever you decide to do now, we'll do by ordinance and we'll do it right. And so now we're down to square one. This ordinance tonight is ready for third reading. It does call for a speed bump. I would have to amend the ordinance to a speed table. You call it a speed table?
Yes, sir.
We would have to do that if we want to, but because we're changing, we are, can we just amend the ordinance by vote tonight and go to a speed table or do we have to go to own ordinance?
Oh, you can interlineate the proper word on the ordinance, I think.
Okay.
This is the first time such an ordinance has been passed.
Right.
We didn't pass one before.
Okay.
And so I would just mark out one, put the other.
This is on third reading.
Wow, I see your point.
That's what scares me.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
We've already passed this ordinance on first reading.
That's, that's the way to do it. Yeah, I didn't understand your question. Would you pass this on first and then go on?
Yeah.
But, but it must read.
So I can do that and we can, we can go ahead and amend the ordinance?
Yes.
So.
But you have to pass it on first reading and start over again on the, on the.
Counsel, if you want to do this tonight, you would have to amend the ordinance to say speed table. Then we'd have to go back and pass it on first reading and then either suspend the rules and consider it on third reading tonight or let it lay over till the next meeting.
My question would be again, just going back to the cost. I mean, do you have any idea? Just because we've spent a lot of money on it already.
You know, normally in my head, I, I know how much a yard we pay for and how much a ton we pay for blacktop. Seems like about $90 a ton. I'm thinking probably three to four ton there. So you're talking, let's just give it 500 bucks for blacktop. We can put it down with our own machine. That's not a big deal. We can paint it. So you're, we probably can do it for 1,500 bucks. David, you agree with me?
Yeah, we can put it down.
For 1,500 bucks?
I've been involved in this making a template and laying it that way. Like concrete striking across with a, make a piece of plywood where we can make a template with a, with a six-foot.
No, no, it's, it's 22 foot.
At 22 foot across the road though, isn't it?
No, we're going to make it 22 foot long so that the car gets completely up on top of it before it goes back down again.
Oh, that's, that's a little one.
So I'm, I'm thinking four or five ton of blacktop.
I'm thinking the other way, I'm appalled.
Four or five ton of blacktop and then it'll have horns and paint.
It could be done.
Can I ask a question? I want to make sure I understand this. It will take six feet to go up the three and a, three to three and a half inches, correct?
That's correct.
Six and six and a half feet. So you're going to be going up slowly. And then you'll have the whole car.
More, more slowly than with a bump. But it's still enough of a, enough of a change to somebody who's going.
Without the bump, you go up real slow because you stopped to go up.
Yeah. If someone is driving along at a rate of speed higher than they should be, it's still going to be a little uncomfortable to them.
But at 20 mile an hour?
It should be okay.
Thank you.
If you do this, I'll have him draw the specs so that's in the minutes we did it properly. If you decide to do this. I'm not comfortable with us just going off, not knowing what we're doing and just do it.
Now, if we can't get this, this laid until spring, the speed bump comes out now, right?
If that's what you want to do, you know, really the speed bump is illegal there right today because we have no ordinance blacktop. John, if they, yeah, that's the way it's got to be. If they pass the speed table tonight, then the bump has to come out until we get the table in. That's where if you want to vote on this ordinance and keep the speed bump there, then you need to pass this on third reading tonight.
Well, that's illegal, right?
Well, it's not exactly illegal, but it's not a safe item is what my engineering companies tell me.
I wouldn't recommend keeping it.
And believe me, I went and got somebody totally independent, you know, someone to look at this that knew what they were doing.
What does the temperature have to be to put blacktop down?
The surface needs to be at least 40 to 50 degrees.
Should be 50 degrees on a small surface.
I don't think we're going to get any days like, unless Mother Nature's fooling us, that we can make blacktop. We just barely got Western Avenue done. Not much blacktopping takes place after November it's done pretty much.
Oh, right there.
Well, we do that with pug mix and that. We don't, it doesn't need a temperature for that. We, we may get, we may get some nice days and we can heat that. We have a torch that we can heat that to do that small job. We can heat it.
It's going to warm up this weekend, I think.
It's a decision you guys need to make. But what's there is illegal, shouldn't be there. Because we didn't pass it in ordinance form.
So what are you asking for right now?
If you pass it in ordinance form tonight, it may not be the best thing, but you passed it and it's there.
We'll change the ordinance to speed table instead of speed bump. We amend the ordinance we have, right?
Right.
Start over.
The language would be to amend pending ordinance 3163 to read speed table rather than speed bump.
And in the first reading.
I'll make that motion.
Say.
We got a motion and a second that we amend pending ordinance 3163 to say that a speed table be installed at 35th Street and Central Avenue. Speed table.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment to the ordinance? Any at all? Anybody out there? Not appearing, we'll have a real call vote on just the amendment to change the ordinance to say speed table.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
No.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
No.
So it's three to two on the amendment. The amendment passes. The ordinance now says speed table. Pending ordinance number 3163 on first reading to pass this ordinance which provides for putting a speed table on 35th Street and Central Avenue at Connersville, Indiana. Anybody want to make a motion to pass this ordinance?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second that we pass pending ordinance 3163 that now reads that a speed table be installed. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I got some.
Okay.
Over the last couple of weeks, I've had several people call me and that were adamantly opposed to having the speed bump there as it is. They live in the area just north of there or in that general vicinity. And most of the people are very, very opposed to having that speed bump there and would like to see it removed. I also took the liberty of calling the transportation director of the bus garage to find out if there's been any problems with buses up there or any problems of that kind. She said actually when we discussed this the first time about a year and a half, two years ago, that she looked into it, talked to all of her drivers and at that point, the ones that had been running the routes there for numerous years have report, have reported no incidents whatsoever. She also said that with. She also said that with the speed bump there, and I'm not sure if the speed table would make much difference or not, but it actually increases the wear and tear of the vehicles. Um, so we don't have anything else like this in town, and I don't see why we need to have this in this place, like I've said on numerous occasions. Um, and we're, we're basically taking a traffic issue and instead of having a traffic issue in one single spot, spread it to other streets. So I, I encourage you to vote no on this one.
Any other discussion?
Didn't we, um, kinda consult Troy and Dale and see if it was a, was it a problem with your trucks?
As far as patience with ours, it, it is.
The bump is, but with the hump, but wouldn't that the hump?
The table.
Table, the table.
The, the table, I don't know about.
Okay.
I've never been over one. I don't know.
What about you, Troy?
We don't, we don't travel that street a whole lot. Try it on too.
When's the last time there was an accident there? Or, well, it's the speeding that you, you want slowed down. That's, okay, never mind.
But speeding occurred all around town. I mean, you go to Western and see speeding occurring. You can go to Grand Avenue and see speeding occurring. If we're gonna, if we're gonna talk about speeding, then that's a law enforcement issue. It's not a traffic issue.
I know the one study we looked at said they estimated the number of vehicles going around that curve at two thousand per day. And if you believe there were ever two thou-, uh, two thousand cars a day going around that curve, I've got a bridge I wanna sell.
Well, you know, talking about speed bumps again, I, I actually went down a couple of alleys the other day and there were numerous speed bumps down these alleys.
Those aren't thorough affairs either.
Well, they're not, but cars are going.
Those speed bumps were placed by ordinance, the ones I know about, because kids play basketball.
Yeah, but I was just saying that there are speed bumps there and there, there may not be a thorough flip fare, but I mean, cars travel there and I, I found them, they slowed me down. Of course, they had an opening in the middle, you know, we put one tire through, but, uh, they did slow you down in the alley, and so we do have something in town.
But not on any other roads?
Well, we went through a couple of alleys.
I mean, they're, they're in alleys, but there are no other roads that have a speed bump.
They serve their purpose in the alleys. I'm just saying, they do slow people down in the alleys, and if this is a concern that they go around the turn too fast, I mean, that's the only concern I have. I mean, are, are they really going around the curve too fast? They say they do. Do they? I mean.
Yes, there's, there's cars.
Okay, so I, I mean, I think it's a concern, say, okay, what can we do to slow them down? Now, we can't put a police officer there all the time to manage it, so what, what can we do to make most people happy with not to be too intrusive? You know, I've had a couple of people call me who are against the speed bump because they spill their coffee when they go over it. Okay, I mean, it's a, it's a legitimate excuse, but I don't think it's, whatever this, what's it called again?
Speed table.
Table would do the cause same.
It's, it's not gonna be the same, but it's still gonna cause the same, the same jolt. Not, not quite this intense, but it'll still cause a jolt.
On the table, the car's gonna get up on the table completely and then go down off the table. That's the idea of the thing. And all I'm concerned about's the angle, and that'll stop the angle because once you get up on top, you'll just go off. So if someone goes over there and hits that, they still have time to correct on top of the table.
And like I said before, if we're worried about speeding occurring at corners, does that mean we're gonna put one of these in every corner and, and throughout every road in town? Because there's several of them.
Where?
Up by the high school. There's all kinds of highs, curbs up by the high school. There's no curves up by the high school.
Now, wait a minute, we're not gonna have a debate, we're not gonna have a debate here between the council. You have a right to speak in favor or against, and that's what we're gonna do. Uh, we've done the best we can. We brought an expert in. We've had him study it. He is a licensed engineer. He's put it through his company. This is what he recommends to the city of Connersville. If we wanna slow traffic down there, uh, it's time to be constructive and hear, hear questions to him and, uh, I, I'm getting, nobody has ever called me and told me they didn't like the speed bump or they didn't like this or they wanted it there or didn't want it there. No, nobody that I know of, but people are telling me all the time, they're pet, tired of us spending all this time on speed bump.
Well, I totally agree. I mean, I agree with what you're saying about the speed bumps and all that, but in this particular issue, I mean, this particular area, if it's a real problem, I, I think to do nothing is wrong and to say, okay, please stay up there and slow people down if there truly is a speeding problem. I'm just saying, what can we do, something very simply to satisfy everybody, even the coffee drinkers? And that's why I was thinking about the little ribbon things, you know, but, you know, I understand that probably wouldn't, they would just hold it like this.
I suggested to Steve the other day, maybe we just put a stop sign there. You gotta go up there and stop before you can turn the corner. He said that's not really a, a good practice because you'd have to have a stop sign both ways. I guess they speed both ways, right?
Yes.
I did have a lady call me the other day, I told you wrong, and she said, why didn't you tell me that bump was there? And I said, I can't tell everybody in town. I mean, I've been talking. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to consider pending ordinance thirty-one sixty-three with the word, "A speed table inserted." Is there any further discussion? Not, I'm gonna call for the vote. We'll have a roll call vote.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
No.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
No.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Okay, so three to two, it's favored, that passes. We, uh, want to suspend the rules and move on to third and final reading.
Second. I mean.
So moved.
So moved.
I will shoot in a second. Okay, on suspension of rules only, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We can't move on, so we're right back where we were, but we now have an ordinance that says speed table, that's when the speed bump will be considered at the next meeting on third and final reading.
Okay, can we?
Wait a minute.
Oh, sorry.
Am I in order, John?
Come in.
Am I in order? Have I done it right?
Yes.
Yeah. The, what do we do if we wanna remove the one we have now if it's really not, it really shouldn't be there?
I really should remove it tomorrow morning because it's not a, it's not by ordinance. The bump was not put in there by ordinance.
Nothing authorizes it.
Nothing authorizes it. If something would happen up there, I think we have some liability issues, right, John?
That would be right.
That's what I'm.
So what, what is your advice to the council?
I, I think it should be removed, uh, uh, unless an ordinance is passed to support it. It would be the two options.
The fact that we amended this ordinance and it no longer says speed bump, there's no chance it's gonna go back to bump.
Right.
All right.
You don't have to take a vote on that, do you? You just go ahead and remove it?
No, I have to remove it because I can't do anything in the.
Okay, that's why I think you should.
Okay. All right, that issue is over.
Thank you, sir.
Steve, I appreciate it, and if you don't mind staying just a minute, um.
Yes, sir.
I asked you to do something else for me and, uh, what was it?
Floor, bathroom floor.
Okay, how are we?
Well, the, uh, the initial report is that the floor doesn't meet the, uh, load requirements or, uh, building code. If it were made of two-by-eights instead of two-by-sixes, we would have met that requirement, but the two-by-sixes aren't sufficient to meet the load requirements of the building code. If we want to meet the requirements of the building code, we can either add two-by-sixes underneath the existing floor, uh, to make it eight-inch on center spans, or we can remove the existing two-by-sixes and go with, uh, two-by-eights.
It's much easier to just go put the two-by-sixes in.
Can I ask you which bathroom we?
Okay, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Hold on a minute. Some months ago, we, we knew the problem. We leased, we leased a space from the old Fifth Third Bank to where, uh, our studio. We do not have a bathroom in our portion, so we, uh, we, you allotted me some money, you know, fifty-eight hundred dollars or something, to put a bathroom in because we had a elevator shaft that was put in to be used in the future that was never used. It's about nine-by-nine, right?
Yeah.
Made a nice bathroom, so we went in there and they've been using it as storage, but then we got down underneath it and it, like you said, it had two-by-six, sixteen-inch on center with about an inch plywood on top.
Three-quarters?
Three-quarters.
Yes, sir.
We, he tested it, but it doesn't meet requirements because we need double that. So I guess the easiest thing to do is just go up there, about four two-by-sixes will take care of it, place them on the side or every inch.
In between the ones that are already there?
In between, and then you'll write that up for me, and then once you get that, you'll, you'll approve it.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I, I really don't need anything from the council other than explaining to you what we're doing, okay? It's important that we have that bathroom because we don't have a handicap bathroom on the TV side and we have all kinds of public up there all the time, so I'm gonna put that in. Uh, it's, you know, I'm renting, we only pay a percentage of utilities, but it's our responsibility to take care of the inside. John, yeah, you're here. Is that all right with you, John? I don't think that's gonna be a big problem, do you?
No, we'll figure it out.
It's gonna add a little expense to you, but we can, not, not that much.
Just two-by-eights, so.
Huh?
Just the added two-by-sixes or?
Yeah, every, you know, probably about six of them is all we gotta buy. The labor's what it's gonna cost you to climb up there and put it in, 'cause you can put those in for you.
I can get it tomorrow morning.
Okay. I just wanted to inform you while he is here that he took care of that. We don't have a city engineer, so when I gotta have something engineered, I gotta hire out an engineer to come up and engineer things. Steve, I appreciate you coming up today. We worked on your other project. We got that.
I heard that. Thank you.
Okay, oh yeah, I sent you an email.
Yes.
We've had so much going on today, I'm upside down.
Sorry.
Okay. Uh, email me then, tell me how things are.
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And send me a bill for the speed table and send me the bill for the engineering.
Will do.
Just send it to the clerk treasurer.
Julie gets all the bills, right? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. We're living right along here. We have pending ordinance number thirty-one sixty-four, uh, to transfer twenty-one hundred dollars from fringe benefits into electricity and water and cable TV. You know, we're at the end of the year and we're transferring from Peter to PayPal.
I remember we passed pending ordinance sixty, uh, thirty-one sixty-four on first reading.
Okay, we have a motion to pass pending ordinance thirty-one sixty-four on first reading, transferring from fringe benefits to electricity and water, twenty-one hundred dollars in the, uh, cable TV. Any question or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. You want to suspend the rules and consider?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules so we can consider pending ordinance thirty-one sixty-four on third and final reading. On suspension of rules only, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We can move forward.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance thirty-one sixty-four on third and final reading, transferring twenty-one hundred dollars from fringe into electricity and water and cable TV. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Pending ordinance thirty-one sixty-five. I asked John Baker to put forth this ordinance before you tonight. We have a nice new Western Avenue, and as I explained to you, the big trucks, the sixteen millers, are taking a shortcut through our town so they don't have to wiggle around the truck route, and they can go down Hit Third Street, go to Rushville, or go right down State Road One, or even go over and hit Fifth Street. We wanted to restrict the traffic. So John looked into this and he's written an ordinance that many other cities have. They don't allow semis. Now, if a semi's delivering to Stance or a business in town, like sometimes I get a load of granite, they're allowed to go down there, but if the state police or the city police officer comes in there and looks at it and say, you know, let me see your bill of lading, where are you delivering? And if he's going through town delivering in Rushville or Paducah, Kentucky, he's gonna get a ticket, and it can be up to twenty-five hundred dollars. Now, that'll keep that traffic off that road and hopefully keep it nice. And if you, we've been watching, uh, there's probably ten trucks an hour going down Western Avenue. Anybody lives on it, I can tell you. Sure, if Ruby was here, she could tell you how many trucks go down there. That's why we're putting forth this ordinance. Discussion on the ordinance or, uh, do you want to just pass it or what do you wanna do?
How do you determine the twenty-six thousand pounds gross?
It's in the truck or in the, on its, uh, when they pa, stop a truck, they can look and tell.
It's on the doors a lot of times.
And what about signage, uh, warning the driver?
We'll have to put signs both north and south and in between.
Are they ready to be put up?
Not until we pass the ordinance.
We can pass it, hopefully tonight.
Yeah, but I'd like to keep the big trucks off of it.
Absolutely.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. We pass pending ordinance number thirty-one sixty-five limiting the weight limits on Western Avenue. John, does it go from what street to what street?
Uh, the status sheet.
Thirty of the third, okay, there. Thirty of the third.
Thirty of the third.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'll have a roll call vote.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Yeah, pass that five up, uh, on first reading. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules, so we can consider pending ordinance thirty-one sixty-five. On suspension of rules only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, we can move forward.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second that we consider pending ordinance thirty-one sixty-five on third and final reading, that would limit the weight of trucks exceeding twenty-six hundred, twenty-six thousand pounds from using Third Street as a thru traffic.
Western Avenue.
Western Avenue, with the exception of delivery, or local deliveries. Any discussion? Anybody out there have an objection? Okay, roll call vote.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Yeah, pass that five to zero. That becomes an ordinance. I will sign it directly. And we will get the signs ordered and get it posted, and I will instruct the police to start watching it.
Mayor, I need to call your attention, this.
That's right, it has to be published.
Ordinance cannot be in full force and effect until after publication.
Just in the paper. Can we get by with publishing it in the paper two weeks in a row, is that it?
Well, I'm not sure. Julie and I have talked about this. I know it's published at least once, perhaps twice. I'll check it in the morning.
Okay. Okay. I understood that. Anything has a penalty, we have to do that.
Right, it has a penalty. That's the reason for the requirement of publication.
Yeah, before you know it, pending ordinance thirty-one sixty-six, as we discussed with you some weeks ago. This is an ordinance established in the city court. This has to be passed this year in order to establish it next year. The fact that you pass this ordinance, if you do tonight, does not mean you have to establish it. You could knock away from it at a later date and say, no, we've changed our mind. But if you don't pass it, you can't consider it at all until four years from now. It can only be established every four years. John's done extensive research, others have done some research. We all think it's, Fran has worked on this for almost three years.
Yes.
And it gives a court where they can come in here. Some cities are having court once or twice a week in the evening. Police officers can handle all their cases at once. They don't have to go down the standing line. They don't have to be at a particular time and then get delayed. It'll save a lot of time on police officers. They can handle all of their own city ordinances. And it, from all things we're told, it'll be a moneymaker for the city rather than all the money going to the state. Discussion, or you want?
I've got a question. Is this taking away, because I was asked by someone, is this taking away money from a county?
I don't know, John, I don't know.
No, no, it's between the state and the city. When you say county, do you mean county, like the circuit court or the county court? Yes, they'll have less traffic tickets, for example. In most cases, those traffic tickets, especially city citations, on-traffic tickets would be heard by a city court. Not to be confused with ordinance violations. Those are now heard by superior court, but they would also be heard by a city court if one were established.
Okay, I think something else too was mentioned last time, in the fact that we could start making more arrests or giving more tickets. I mean, I think that kind of got misunderstood.
The ordinance form of a ticket versus state ticket. So it would all go through City Hall and through a city court versus going through superior court.
You're saying that's a moneymaker?
Traffic tickets, something like that.
Yeah, that's what was said.
The courts, my feeling is the courts are both busy. I don't think they'll miss it. Do you, John?
No.
They're back up.
They're pretty busy.
Again, I'm saying if we pass this tonight, it's here, then we have to start moving forward with it, you know. Get ready to elect a judge next year when they elect city offices and all that kind of stuff. But if we don't pass it, then we can't do it, so.
Well, I think on the surface, it looks good like a good idea. However, there are some definite limitations. There's no cost in there. I think in order to actually establish this, I think we would need the cost. So, you know, if this just sets up the ability to do it, I'm all for it.
Is that right, John? It sets up the ability to do it?
Right.
We can study.
It's what is necessary to satisfy the terms of the state statute, whereby a third-class city can establish city courts every four years, beginning in the year two thousand and six, and every fourth year after that. And the reason it works that way is because the election is every four years. And so it has to coincide with the election, the city election. And of course, the next city election is next year. And if the statute provides that the ordinance must be passed the year before the upcoming city election in order to be valid. And then if it's not passed this year, it would have to be passed four years later, if ever. So that's the reason for the urgency to get it passed two thousand and fourteen. If it is passed, and it does provide for the establishment of a city court and the election of a judge, then steps would have to be taken to implement that, pursue it, go do all the work it would take to get that in place. And like the mayor says, I think that if it's determined that, in fact, a city court is not necessarily not needed, not wanted, it could be repealed.
I think we're still kind of, even behind eight ball on this, even as we sit, I mean, as we think about it, if we were to pass it today, we're still kind of a little behind. It doesn't set forth any of the parameters that are required for the city court. It doesn't really specify. It tells, you know, a few of the judge's duties, but it doesn't really tell exactly what the judge's duties are. It doesn't tell the cost of this. It makes me really leery to even, to think that we would have a person that would want to run for a city judge when they don't even know exactly.
That's what John's saying. We have set all that up.
I understand that, but, you know, when we're going to, people will start filing paperwork in February.
January.
January, February. So, I mean, I think we're still behind eight ball on this thing.
Well, we would have to pass it first. I mean, we would have to come up with all those parameters first, I mean, before we add one.
No, the, if you look closely at the ordinance.
Salaries?
Yeah. The statute is included by reference. As opposed to printing out the entire statute, which is voluminous. There's ten different sections, you know, we'd have an ordinance this thick. I thought it might be easier to work with if we referred to the statute by reference. So if you're interested in pursuing a city court, we simply open the book and see what the statute says regarding the judge's powers and jurisdiction. For example, personnel expense costs, court sessions, compensation, restrictions on activities of the judges.
Well, that's all state mandated, right?
Records, procedures, and practices.
It's all state mandated. We don't have anything to do with it.
It's established by statute.
Yeah, that's great. And we never, we may never ever bring this up, right?
We're going to try to, if you pass this, we're going to try to, you know, we've been researching, and we know.
Every city that we've talked to thinks it's a grand idea. They're doing good with it. Small cities are doing good with it. It's not as, the judge only works like two evenings a week. You know what I mean? Usually someone in the clerk treasurer's office is appointed to be the, but has to do all their work, not on clerk treasurer's time, has to do it as a separate job. In the cities we've talked to, so. Just for instance, someone in Julie's office, whoever the new clerk treasurer could say, and the judge would appoint, or whoever appoints according to law. And two hours a night, they would come here and be with the judge, and they would hold court right here in this room. We don't need the room. We don't, I mean, we still, we'd have to heat and cool lists. There's no, the only expense we have is a judge and a clerk. And you're only talking probably one or two nights a week at the most.
And the malfeasance would take care of it.
Once a month. So you're not talking a big expense.
Well, are we or not? Because if the judge is getting paid a hundred thousand dollars.
No, no.
It's going to take a long wait.
No, it's not.
But we don't know that, because it's not in here.
The city council establishes the judge's salary. And it would be based on the amount of hours, so.
Yeah, it's set by salary ordinance, just like you said, everybody else's.
So if we pass this today, though, is all I'm saying, if we pass it today as it is, and I think it's a pretty good idea, I'm just worried about cost. And we don't do anything with it, besides pass it, then this will be elected next year, the city judge will be elected next year, regardless, unless we repeal it or set the other parameters.
We might just let it lay and never do it, or we, once, if you pass this type, we'll dig into it, and put a salary ordinance together for a judge, or put a salary ordinance together for a clerk, whatever else is needed, and move with it. But the city owns this building, so we don't have to pay rent. We don't have to pay for a courtroom. We don't have, we have no expense. John, other than those expenses, what else do we have? Some paper?
Well, you have some startup expenses for recording machinery. There needs to be a record made. Preliminary record. It's theoretically not a court of record in which cases cannot be appealed from that court. But commonly, a record is made just for the convenience of the court reporter and the judge, if he wants to listen to what was said in a hearing or something. But that's relatively cheap. That's not a big expense. So, yeah, I think if you're, the statute doesn't set the cost. It just provides, the council determines the salaries, and then the amount of cost of other aspects would be under the section Personnel Expenses and Costs, all of which are set by council.
This council will actually pick those costs. It's not going to be dictated to us. It's going to be picked by this council, because this is the council that has to establish it.
One possibility might be, and this must be passed this year in order for it to work, otherwise it has to go six years. But if you pass it first reading, I can get a copy of the statute to you, if that would be of any help. I provided it to Fran, because he was the person most interested in the possibility of establishing a city court. I can also get that to the rest of it. Which sets out some more detail, which I didn't include in the ordinance, just for the sake of the size of the ordinance we would be trying to handle.
Further discussion?
Well, I'd say this passed in our first reading tonight, and we move on, because it's been pointed out, unless we do it before the end of this year, why it'll not happen again for four years.
Well, for a community that, number one, needs the money, not that we're going to go out and arrest people to make money, but we're arresting people all the time. There's all these things going on. We just won't be getting the money.
But arrest won't apply to that. It's just the ordinance violations.
No, the jurisdiction of the court would include all misdemeanors. You know, those.
All misdemeanors from the city, correct?
All city, well, all misdemeanors occurring within the boundary of the city. And.
Which that's ninety percent.
Yeah, and most trafficking fractions, DUIs, and speedings, and other things. And ordinance violations, and some civil jurisdiction.
We talked to the lady that was being paid, the recorder, the clerk of the court. What was her pay? I forget. We talked with her.
Yeah, we were, which, yeah.
Martinsville, is that where we talked to?
That was one of them.
Yeah.
I don't recall.
We got the judge's salary, which I think was around twenty-two thousand, something like that.
How often did they have court?
They had court more often. They were much busier than some of the others.
Like I say, Hagerstown meets once a month.
This, I assume the prosecutor would have to come from the prosecutor's office.
Well, that or the city attorney.
City attorney could act as prosecutor.
On city cases. Yeah, some of the cases would be state statute cases. Like your misdemeanors, for example. Those are all state statute cases. And the deputy prosecutor would have to handle that. It was similar to what we did when we had city court several years ago. I handled city court as a deputy prosecutor in my early days. And we met three times a week, and we took care of all the caseload. And that was a very successful court. And gradually went away because of the creation of what was then called a county court, which had similar jurisdictions to the city court. And none since then.
And that became a superior court.
Yeah. What's the, have you guys spoke with the prosecutor's office on this?
Pardon me?
Have you spoke with the prosecutor's office?
I haven't. Yeah, we have. We've talked to the bailiff, who's discussed it with others. I'm sorry, that was superior court bailiff.
Any further questions? Discussion? Anybody out there have a opinion? Okay. I'll take a motion if you want to pass this on towards reading, otherwise I'll put it in my floor.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second that we consider pending ordinance thirty-one sixty-six on first reading, which is the first step in establishing a city court for the city of Connersville. Any discussion? We've discussed a lot. Have a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Yes.
We pass on first reading. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second that we suspend the rules and consider this pending ordinance on third and final reading, an ordinance that would establish a court in the city of Connersville. Any further discussion? Have a roll call vote.
This is suspension of rules.
Okay, suspension of rules, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I see the other touches.
We stopped in on first reading, and we'll consider this at the meeting, the first meeting in December. Department reports for October. Gene Worley is not present with the airport. Police, ordinance forcing, Dave, council. Dave, did you, did you talk to us before you leave?
I didn't talk to you. I come next.
Yeah, you came next.
Are you having slippery streets?
Well, I got one place that you can look at.
Go ahead.
Let me see. Month of October, we had nine hundred and forty-one law reports. Listen up. Forty-three citations, zero ordinance violations, and twenty-nine warnings. And this just goes to show that these are forty-three citations that were written on a state ticket, where it could have been, if you had a city court, it would come into city court, and the citations would have came here.
What is, what is the court fee on a citation of traffic? Do you know?
You mean the court cost?
Yeah.
Well, it's a lot more than the fine. It can be upwards of, well, like, a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars.
A hundred and thirty-four dollars, I think, on traffic.
Yeah, I was going to say something like that.
How much?
I was going, just what Fran said, something like that.
How much is a hundred and thirty-four?
Yeah, that's.
Six thousand dollars is just right there, an income, if you handle those citations.
Yeah, but if we look at our citations, they're not normally that high.
Huh?
Our citations normally aren't that high.
I don't know.
Our, our traffic tickets?
Yeah.
And go through court? Yeah, that's what we're just talking about.
They're normally forty-three a month.
Pardon?
They're normally forty-three a month.
You mean, there's forty-three tickets a month?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have every bit of them, or more.
That's pretty low, because in the summertime, we have lots of ordinance violations.
We have a lot more radar being ran and everything. That's a low number, well, easily.
I'd like to see a little higher if we're going to have that, for sure.
Yeah, well, like I said, and as I said, we have a guy in the ordinance violations, we got a few guys doing that, but a lot of times, you'll see me and Dennis doing that for various things. Of course, we had twenty-nine warning issues, six personally injured accidents, forty-one property damage, one fatality, and a hundred and forty-one arrests.
Okay, that cost of operating your department, Dave, was one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. During the time, around nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. Everything else seemed to be about, about the same.
Is that operation pullover?
No, not last month, no.
Julie, the hundred and eighty-nine thousand is, is that down from a year ago?
Oh, yes, I think so.
Yeah, if you look at this, two eighty, two oh nine, two oh one, in March, when we issued the order, it dropped immediately, a hundred and eighty-six, a hundred and eighty-six, a hundred and eighty-four, a hundred and eighty-three, two thirty-seven, I think that was the pullover.
And that's a month, we have three pays.
Yes, three pays that month.
And nine, nine.
But it always ran over two hundred thousand normally.
And in our overtime, as you can see up at the top, has gone down to nine hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Any other questions, Ken? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David?
Couple of quick things I must mention today in the board of works meeting. Next week, your trash will be picked up on Friday and Saturday because of the holiday on Thursday. So a five-day pickup, so Thursday will be picked up on Friday, Friday will be picked up on Saturday. Makes it even, so we have one guy doing it, so that's what it's going to be. We got through our first note, and I hope it's okay for everybody to drive, so.
David, I'm not sure if you can answer, but maybe Julie can. The Department of Transportation jumped from forty thousand last month to a hundred and thirty-one thousand this month. What's happening? What's going on?
That doesn't sound right.
Doesn't sound right to me either, but that's what it says.
No, what doesn't come out of there?
We haven't paid for Western Avenue.
That doesn't come out of DOT.
Okay.
That doesn't at all.
I don't, I don't.
That was forty thousand five twenty-two last month, and this month, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, six fifty-nine thirty.
Oh, we paid the trash truck payment.
Yes, it is, sixteen.
Oh, that's ninety-two thousand dollars.
That makes a big difference.
Yeah, ninety-two, okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, Steve.
Thanks.
Oh, if you will, get the data on early tomorrow night?
No, no problem. We'll bring it on.
Utilities is next. Utility director, formerly the Parks Department head.
Should have a report of revenue, signature copy, broke down to our fund balances, our revenue, and our expenditures for the month. Our overtime report is two thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. Twenty-six of those hours was at after late repair, and some service call over night watch hours. And we have fifty-five work orders, project update, all the five-inch meters are installed. We're working right now to get the bags out. We also have two-inch meters on order to finish that part of it. Grand Avenue update, like I said, weather's been issued. Still, our main goal is to get the underground utilities completed before winter. Last week, we ran into some problems with the water lines, lateral lines busting. I think we had three unfasted, which is the lines off the drain to the houses, and there's still hoop leader boxes. Any questions?
I'll tell you, council, you made some good decisions. The two guys that are running our utilities took one contract that was eighteen thousand dollars and talked it down to twelve thousand dollars. Today, we three of us met together, and we worked on another contract that was over four hundred thousand. When we're talking about designing, and got it down to three hundred and some thousand dollars. They're working for you daily. They pushed and got the meters in. They've watched their overtime. They have switched the vehicles around. I was being told by the former directors that I had to buy two trucks this year. They tell me we don't need any trucks at all. They switched them around. Of course, we'll be able to read meters with one vehicle. And probably, I'm told, that six, eight months, we could read the meters in a half a day. We spent five to six days reading meters.
That's our goal.
Yeah. They're to be commended. I have never seen anybody take over like Mike has. This report he's developed, isn't this a great report? You can tell exactly what's going on. I was always afraid to give you the report, because it was so complicated. You had to be with it every day. I appreciate your report. I want to commend you, and for what you've done over there. How long you been over there?
About three or four months.
You've done a great job.
Well, I had a lot of help so far. Well, I've had law help so far.
I know you have, and Brad has done a great job. He had me out two hours this morning looking at back trucks in the cold up on Ohio Avenue with a wind and underneath a tree where the snow blows off the tree and down your neck.
But he took his jacket and gloves.
I did take his jacket and gloves. You should have and your face wouldn't be so real.
Yeah, I know, I stood out there.
He didn't have enough clothes on. But we looked at back trucks and the reason I wanted to bring all this up, we're going to be coming to you just shortly. We have to buy a new back truck, ours is twenty-two years old, it's all rusted out. I thought, oh, they got to have another plaything over there, I'll go look at your back trucks. I never realized that we clean out thousands of miles of sewer this big around with that back truck. Run it fifteen hundred feet up in there with a big nozzle and clean them. We had lots of people here, they, we had six trucks?
Five trucks.
Five trucks, and every one of them brought two people trying to sell us the truck. But some of those had been former utility people. And they said, well, most cities clean all their sewers every year, at least every other year. I said, well, Brad, how many times did we clean our sewers? He says, most of them haven't been cleaned for ten years. Because we didn't have the staff to run the back truck every day to keep cleaning sewers. And this thing puts down little holes like this and climbs up in the sewer and shoots back under terrific pressure all of the debris and stuff. And then this huge back was down there sucking it up into the tanks. It's amazing, they can use it to clean all of their lift stations, which, twenty-six?
Yes, twenty-six.
Twenty-six lift stations, all of our miles and miles and miles of sewer. And it's just got to be done. I'm selling you on this because I'm going to come and ask you to allow us to do a lease purchase on a back truck soon as we take bids and through the- So if you don't want me to do that, tell me quickly because we're going to go through all the efforts to get this done. Next summer, we're going to try to get a lot of this done. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Landfill, I don't know what happened to Tommy, he's not here, he's got the report in front of him. Looks like it's pretty much a normal report. He runs it pretty tight and swift down there. Any questions? Call Tom. Fire Department.
Good evening, we had a hundred and thirteen runs, two hundred and sixty-three hours on emergencies, twenty inspections, eight investigations, four pre-planning, fifty-three, fifty-nine hours on training, eleven hundred and fourteen dollars in overtime and an FLSA. It looks like about all have. Do we have any questions?
The cost of operating your department, excuse me, Mayor?
Go right ahead.
A hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-two cents, which is down considerable.
How much is it down there? I know you know it better than the rest of us.
Well, the bump from last month, it's down around like fourteen thousand, but going back a year, it's down from over two hundred thousand.
Any questions from the fire chief? No, thank you, Troy. First aid unit.
For the month of October, our expenses from the city share was forty-five thousand, two ninety-three, seventy-four. Our receipts were seventeen thousand, seven twenty-nine, ninety-eight. Per total of twenty-seven, five sixty-three, seventy-six, we made two hundred and five runs. Any questions?
No mileage for AMS One, that pending, not even running?
Nope, that's the one.
We've got it up in the shop, looking to do body-
Okay, went away, okay.
And we should have it this next month, right?
Talked to them today, they're, everything that works, hoping December twelfth.
December twelfth.
It's in the paint shop and they're, he said they're having an issue with the paint, so.
They had an issue with the paint on the other one?
Well, that's, they said that's their problem and they'll get it took care of, so.
What's your overtime?
Zero.
Thank you. Appreciate the way you're running the operation, remember he's one of the one-man short, he's still doing a good job.
Yeah.
Connersville Parks Recreation, Miss Fall, Mrs. Fall. Did you notice that? Changed her name? Huh?
She's still listed her old name on the box, on her tour.
Oh, you're not Mrs. Fall?
Well, I am. I guess Melissa's the thing.
Melissa told me she wrote it in there, oh, I don't know.
No, it's not.
No, she did, on my, she did. How would you think I'd ever remember that? Go ahead.
Revenue for the month was five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and three cents, which raised it to about two hundred and one thousand dollars for the year. Our expenditures for the month was forty-five thousand, six hundred and one dollars and thirty-one cents. I think I'll continue to go down just until the next month, one month as well. We now currently have all of these shelters, restrooms, the soccer complex and the Babe Ruth complex, they're all winterized, some shut down for the winter. At our Halloween party, we had around two hundred and fifty kids and their families we partnered with the Children's Bureau, which they had community businesses, the hospital, all kinds of stuff. Our kids passed through there and then they came in where we had candy and games and the costume contests and all that stuff, so it went over really well, it was a good time. December eleventh, we will have Santa in the park. That will take place at the Miller Center, that'll be from six to seven-thirty. We have a photographer there to take pictures, cookies, punch, candy games, all the good stuff. For the month of December, we are, this is something new we're doing. We're offering discounts, fifteen percent discounts on passes for the entire season. Thought it'd be a good way to sell a little more season passes, Christmas presents and things like that. So we'll also be having it again in March, so.
With Roberts Building, Jessica brought in six hundred and thirty dollars, so it's climbing every month it seems to be. Good.
I wanted to ask you, we, you put those people in there for, on trial for three, through the end of this year. How's it working?
Good, good.
Are you satisfied with them?
Yeah.
They're extremely satisfied with you. They tell me every week what a great thing. I think it's great that a different group of people, middle-aged people to older people, are enjoying that building every Friday night. They're having great crowds and they really enjoy it. I think, I think it's a great thing. Do you think we need to approach that again or just leave it run as it is? You know, we gave them a special price, they're renting it every week and- Any counsel, any problem?
Put a time element on that, I don't remember.
We said we'd let it go till the first year and see how it worked out and we'd go from there. Do you want, do you want to look at it again, end of the year?
Isn't that actually Board of Works?
I think it is Board of Works.
It is Board of Works, but I want the feeling of the Counsel. You're the one who gave them the special prize. Or did Board of Works give it?
Board of Works did.
We'll ask Board of Works. Any other questions?
Good job.
Okay, channel three.
For the month, we had eleven hours, thirty-two minutes of meetings and six hours, forty-one minutes of original programming. Or a little bit less last month for the TV Three Volt as we were going through some of the CHS Greatest Days videos from the eighties. We're still doing that, we've got Eighty-Eight playing this week, so some very interesting stuff, flashback video. Let's see, we finished up football and also produced a tour of the city cemetery. And that's continuing to play during the Garden Doctor's normal spot, so if you want to get some history on the city cemetery, that's playing right now, which is kind of interesting. Obviously, still working on the bathroom situation, we'll be looking at that.
You have the answer tonight, yeah. This Thursday night, we'll have the basketball coach, both men and women.
Yes.
Fran will be having a interview with the basketball coaches Thursday evening at seven o'clock and Connersville's speaking.
It'll be live?
Live, and then on December, what's Saturday?
Twenty-fourth, we start the girls' basketball, twenty-fifth, boys', November.
You're thinking of the Santa show coming up?
What day is it?
It's the third day, I think it's the nineteenth, but I'm probably wrong.
We've invited Santa to be here on the nineteenth, we think. He's coming, you got a confirmation, right?
That would be the eighteenth.
Yep, eighteenth, very good.
You got a confirmation.
That will start live at seven PM and you can call in and talk to Santa Claus.
Go on forever.
Eight-thirty.
Yeah, okay.
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, we got everybody taking care of, old business. Anybody got anything under old business? You got any old business?
No.
Okay, Ms. Laney's business, Debbie? Mr. Carter? Nothing? Okay, under the mayor's update, I got a couple of things I want to talk to you about. The Messiah, I've got the brochure here. This is a co-sponsor between us and the group that's doing it. The Connersville Community Course has been established, they have over a hundred voices. It's going to be at three o'clock on Wednesday afternoon, the thirtieth. It's five bucks. This money will be used for seed money for next year. Fayette Regional Hospital is help sponsoring to get the orchestra. We're going to have a full orchestra at the Robert E. Wise Center at the high school. An hour or two hours before the program, there'll be art displays and tea and crumpets will be there. Really going to be punch and cookies, but it's going to be a wonderful day. Everybody's asking, they, they want things like this in our community, so please get out and support that. You can buy the tickets at Redmond Motors, you can buy the tickets at the mayor's office, you can buy the tickets at
Foundation.
Foundation office, or you can buy your ticket at the door. This is going to be a great thing for the community. Also, the day before on the twenty-ninth, we're going to have a little parade. We're going to do Winter Fest and we'll be lighting the Christmas tree down here on the corner. Starts at five o'clock downtown and at five-thirty, we're going to light the Christmas tree. That's on the twenty-ninth, so twenty-nine and thirty, important things going to happen. Reverend Spicer, the chaplain at the hospital, passed away. And I just received this today. Services for Pastor K Eugene Spicer visitation and funeral service will be held at the Greater Second Baptist Church, thirteen, seven, one, North G Street, Richmond, Indiana. Visitation is Friday, November twenty-first, three to eight. The funeral is Saturday, November twenty-second, at eleven AM. A bereavement dinner will follow, the Townsend Center. So a lot of people have been calling, asking, they knew this had happened. It'll probably be in the paper tomorrow. You didn't? Okay, well, this is the notice, if you want to mention it in your news article. They emailed this today. And I don't even know where it came from, someone just emailed it to me.
I did get that, Mary. But we didn't get it kind of open.
Okay. All right, I thought that was important enough that we should mention it. We had a mishap. The young man that we hired in August to work in the utilities fell off a silo a week ago Friday. A week ago Saturday. He is in the hospital in Indianapolis, having compound fractures of both legs. You probably knew the boy, probably had him in school.
Sure did.
We want to recognize him, his name is?
David Marsh.
Oh, I got something.
David Marsh.
David Myers.
I know it's David Myers, but I had a little something I wanted to say. I misplaced it. David Myers. I thought I wrote down what hospital he was in, if anyone wanted to send a card. Does anyone know, I knew.
I don't say, I think it's Methodist.
Methodist? Okay, if anybody wants to send a card or anything.
He's being moved tomorrow, I think he's coming to read.
To read, okay. We've been following that closely and talking with his folks. I think that's all I have under the mayor's update, public forum. Is there any public left to have a forum? Sir, did you have something you?
No, no, I was, the only comment, I was, you may make note, I was staying at the local hotel and I was going to watch the council meeting on the TV and they don't know what channel it's on and they don't think it's there, so you may even want to reach out, not a bad idea to make sure.
I used to own that hotel and they have what they call, it's a, it's a special TV for hotels and I don't think they carry Channel Three, right, John?
I don't know.
I know we didn't because we bought that, it was, it was a network that we bought and it didn't cover the local channel, but we'd rather have you in person anyway, would you like? Would you like, are you from here or?
Yeah, I was on, I brought one of the factor trucks in.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thanks a lot.
I should have recognized you.
Oh, you're fine.
You had a coat on and you were dressed in your coat. I think you had coveralls on, yeah, yeah.
But I commend you in coming out there and taking a look at that, it means a lot. The most expensive piece of equipment is working, I got through a fire truck, so being out there on the street with the mayor, it means a lot.
Now, when I got back in and we had the Board of Works, she complained that I smelled like a sewer, but I've been holding my head over one all day. Anything else, else under public forum? Nothing, okay. We don't have to do claims here, so I'm ready to adjourn.
I like the motion.
Second.
Got a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adjourn.